All rise, please. Good evening, everybody. Before the start of tonight's regular meeting, the board met an executive session. We had a personnel issue to discuss regarding, we have a 27-week pay period in 2020, and based on our last, our way of doing business, that had to be all worked out, and we did get it worked out tonight. The other thing is that we talked about, we have applied, as our police department has applied to the Bucks County Drug Task Force that's organized by the district attorney, to have one of our officers participate. So that application is pending, but to get approval for that, we needed to do some potential salary adjustments for that police officer. So that's also what we discussed in executive session. Is that fair enough, Chief?
Yes.
Okay. We have, before the start of tonight's meeting, presentations from the Planning Commission, the Bike and Hike, the DTMA, which is the Doylestown Township Municipal Authority, Public Water and Sewer Advisory Board, and the Environmental Advisory Council. Are those folks here? I see you.
Mrs. Lyons, I would just like to say that the Public Water and Sewer Advisory Board needs to take a pass on this one.
Okay.
If someone had some car trouble and would not be able to make it.
All right. They're off the agenda. Mr. Kelso, you want to start?
I'm here tonight on behalf of the Planning Commission and the Bike and Hike Committee.
Oh, good. Okay.
And Judy Hendrickson was going to be here. I don't see her yet.
But now it's you. Two hats.
But thank, thank you again for your continued support on both those committees. I think we've had a great year on both of them and look forward to this year. But with the Planning Commission, I'd like to take a few moments to talk about George Lowenstein. George passed away on February 21st. He was the longest-running volunteer in the township at 39 years.
Wow.
Stefan and I were having that discussion the other day, and he was really the foundation of the Planning Commission. He really kept us upright and steady through a lot of things. And I don't think some of the new board members remember some of the early days and going through the big developments and difficult and complicated plans that were coming in at that time. And he really kept us focused on what we were doing and what our role was as advisory to the board. And years ago, it happened where there was some conflict between the board and the Planning Commission, where we worked long and hard on a certain idea, and it went in front of the board and didn't go anywhere. And that sort of shook the Planning Commission. But George was the one that said, "This is our role. This is what we do. We don't get to make decisions." And that was his voice at the Planning Commission. And he taught us all a lot. And he always returned us back to facts and science. George was an electrical engineer by profession, worked for the Defense Department. And he taught me a lot about compromise and the importance of, and I think this is the most important thing that I never had a grasp of before I was here, was really trying to reach consensus. And George was one of those guys you couldn't always agree with, but he really worked hard. And I think we went for years having consensus on motions. And we still do. We still have been working on that. And I think that's important on keeping a group like the Planning Commission together. And George is the one that, I think, pushed that from the beginning. And I don't know if you read George's obituary, but it was really as modest as George was. I was thinking about it and thinking, "That's not George that I know." And it didn't talk about him raising his daughters after his wife died 10 or 15 years ago, I think it was. I forget how long ago it was. And he helped raise his two grandchildren who were pretty young yet. And his, his life committed to public service. And it wasn't just the Planning Commission. It was other things he did with the township. And after he retired, he worked at the hospital tirelessly. And he obtained a master's degree. After he retired from the Defense Department, he went back to school and obtained a master's degree in urban planning. And that was his commitment to planning. He understood it. He valued it. And, and it really made a difference. His capstone project during his studies was one of our gateway plans that we still use and still a big part of our comprehensive plan. George did a lot for free for the township. And I first met George when I was an applicant. I was a 32-year-old applicant in front of the Planning Commission. And it was George, Marion White, and Barney Jaren there. And they're, they're all passed now. And, and they were three individuals, but George was the one even back then that was asking the tough questions. And my subdivision plan was one page.
Wow.
Back then. Yeah, I drew it myself. It was hand-drawn. But the next thing I found, I was sitting next to George on the Planning Commission the next year, and then he was sitting in my living room, and we were doing the first major update of the township zoning ordinance.
Oh, wow.
And that's what took plans from one page to 30 pages.
Wow.
You can blame that on George and me. But he, he was that kind of guy, tireless and a real attention to detail that a lot of us don't have. But there were, George was from the Bronx. George was an immigrant to Bucks County from the Bronx. And there were only a couple of things that brought the Bronx out in him. And one was an applicant coming into the Planning Commission after they've talked to the staff and the consultants and think everything's worked out. That didn't go well with George, and that brought the Bronx out in him. And then the only other thing I remember was anybody proposing a parking space narrower than 10 feet. George always drove a small car, but George was a big guy. And that's something that we all remember about him. But, but we all loved George, and we all respected him. And, and he's one of those people, when you say somebody's irreplaceable, that's George. You know, you just don't find somebody like that very often with that level of intelligence and commitment. So we'll all miss him. I don't know how you're going to replace him. It's going to be a tough job.
Yep.
But the Planning Commission report, I think we had a good year. The Tabor review, we spent a lot of time on Grasso. That was a great, I think, working back and forth with the board on that one, to take that plan from something that was a little sketchy to something that we all can see how it's going to turn out. We did a lot of housekeeping on zoning and ordinances. That, that's amazingly difficult and time-consuming. But our task that we're looking at for this year, aside from the normal reviews and everything, was to focus on the opportunities and options for building upon the success of things like Solana, the retirement community on 611, and to look at retail sites for possible additions, options that might bring more of that housing into the community. And we're really excited about the one going in at Tabor. And even on Grasso, I think that's going to fill the need. And there's some opportunities with Doylestown Point Shopping Center, for example, with vacant buildings and, and even the AAA building next to it, that we want to make sure that maybe there's, if there is something we can do there, we ought to talk about those opportunities. So I think that's going to be something we'll try and get done this year and get something in front of the board for discussion.
Okay.
Any questions about the Planning Commission this year?
No, I just want to thank you for your comments about George.
Well, that's, glad I could do it.
I'm sitting here thinking that we should do something to memorialize him in here, in the building.
Yeah.
39 years is a long time.
Bike and Hike Committee. It was a very good year at the Bike and Hike Committee. We had, what I think is our most successful public involvement project on the Turk Road Pebble Hill Project. You know, that, we knew it was going to be tough. Stephanie led the way in engaging with the neighborhood early on, from day one. We've had two real successful meetings with them. We've gained people that we thought would be in opposition to it as being champions of it now. And the project is done. The feasibility study is done. It's in sort of final review at this point. It was presented to you a few months ago, I think. And we're looking forward to taking pieces of that and moving them forward for construction. Some we can do in-house, some of the residential streets and everything. It's signage and, and paint for the most part. Then the Champany Greenway Project, which you see underway right now on Bristol Road, they're getting ready to build the bridge across from the Champany Creek is underway. That, I think, was another great success in working with New Britain Township in particular, and Shelfon Borough, which has been working with us for years. So that connection will be done. It should be completed towards the end of, end of this year with one gap in it that New Britain Township is working on. They bought a piece of ground near the Shelfon New Britain Plant, the Coleman Property, and they're planning on turning that into a small park. It's got frontage on the Champany Creek. I think it's going to serve our residents probably more than New Britain Township's. And it'll be a great addition to the, to the trail system, having a little pocket. Well, it's not, it's more than a pocket park, but having parks like that along the stream. So it's, it's going to be a positive thing for all of us. Shady Retreat, that was a construction grant, and that sign is in the safety review process with PennDOT, so it's well along the way. We expect to be out to bid on that one this fall. And that was one that's, I think it was 85% funding on that back safe route to school property or project. And then the other feasibility study that we just are getting underway is from Central Park out to Poole's Corner and looking at South Main Street in Doylestown and looking at options for that. So that's just beginning. And it should be done by the end of the year, too, feasibility study. Some new initiatives we'd like to start talking about is one we're calling Destination Central Buck South and Mill Creek, meaning Mill Creek Elementary School. And it came up in discussions about the sewer project on Old New Road, and that road being torn up and rebuilt, perhaps. It's not in great shape. And Central Buck South, the people in, in our township, in those neighborhoods, you can see the school almost, but you can't get there safely. And it's a very short distance. So we were looking at that. Plus, we've got one trail being constructed along Bristol Road with the development at the Parkway there, and then Toll Brothers. So we'd like to work with Warrington Township on that and see what we can come up with. And it is one, anytime you have a safe route to school project, there's usually funding there. But I think this is something we can do in-house, working, working with Dave and Stephanie. I don't think we need an engineering feasibility study to do it. The idea would be to sort of plan something out, gain consensus, and then start working with property owners and, and get it done. I don't get the funding and get it done. I don't think it's going to be, of course, I always say this, I don't think it's going to be a difficult one, but...
Have you started talking to Warrington Township?
We reached, I reached out to Warrington to find out what the reason why there is not a connection between CB South and the Mill Creek Elementary School as it is. And so we, they explained that, and then in the planning process, they didn't want to make that connection. But they are also doing several trails in and around the area of Lower State to Butter Cup, which is the road that takes you back to Mill Creek. So I think, you know, sometimes they attend our Bike Hike meetings, encourage them to start coming again and, and dialoguing, and they would be happy to dialogue with us at least and see where we can take it.
Yeah, Warrington's more active than what you see with trail programs. They, they just sort of do what we've done over the years. They do small segments, and before you know it, they have some real trails. And the other one we'd like to start discussion about is connecting the Pine Run Community out at the Pine Run Reservoir. We've had interest out there for years. I, I think it's time to talk to the county about perhaps seeing what options there are for connecting the community itself to our trail system. And that's been one of our, I, I use that trail all the time. It's one of our most successful trails. It just opened up the entire area out there. And if you haven't been out there lately, there, there's two sandhill cranes, and their names are Frasier and, what was his wife's name on? Lilith. Lilith and Frasier.
Oh, Lilith.
And it's, I mean, we just don't see sandhill cranes, and I'm not a bird watcher, but they're pretty fascinating. They're huge and just...
Wow.
They stand in a couple puddles out there in the fields. But it's been quite an attraction over the past two years. So we'd like to work on that. Again, it's not something I don't think we need an engineering study on. I think it's something we need to start working with property owners in the county on.
Sounds great.
Any, any questions? Well, thanks again.
Thank you, Tom, for all that you do. I mean, I think you're close to 39 years, too.
I'm here because I enjoy it.
Yeah, I know. Well, we appreciate it very much. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Okay. Keith, for the Doylestown Township Municipal Authority, our water company.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us. And I know our chairman, Dick Bach, was going to be here, but he was unable to attend. So you can see our, I'd like to thank our board of directors as well. And there's one name that's missing up there, and that's Ed Hagie. Ed Hagie served 25 years on the DTMA board. He was our, I believe, our oldest running member, and he retired from the board last year. So Dan Steriker is our newest board member, so he has replaced Ed. And I'd also like to thank Rick Colallo. I believe he served for about 10 years, and now Barbara Lyons is our new liaison. So I'd like to welcome Barbara. So I always start this talk with a, a review of our water quality, because that's why we're here. Our mission critical, number-one mission is to supply safe drinking water to our 2,400 customers. This year, we are pleased to announce that we exceeded all the federal and state Safe Drinking Water Act requirements, no violations, no reporting violations. And in this age of DEP, more stringent regulations, this is not an accomplishment to be taken lightly. So I'm very proud of my operation staff that, who get up at 3:00 AM to fix a faulty pump or, or some issue like that. As I mentioned, the DEP has been evolving to really stress water quality to us. So we implemented various operational changes to our system, as well as we enacted some additional water quality plans to really try and optimize the quality of our water. Last year, we also performed a comprehensive robotic inspection of all of our water tanks. Our water tanks are not only critical to supply fire and pressure, but they can also be a, maintain the water quality in our system. So they need to be painted every so often. So we actually had a nice inspection done and are going ahead in 2020 and starting to paint one of our tanks. We also had a very exciting year as far as expansion and growth. This past year, we added 18 individual homes that had private wells. I believe that is the most that DTMA has ever added in one year. That's more than one a month. It takes an awful lot of work to connect somebody to, on DTMA end from a private well to a public water supply. There's permits, there's road opening fees, there's hiring contractors. But I think it shows the level of trust that, that the community is showing in us and, and the quality of our water, as we hear about these contaminants that are more and more being mentioned in the news. So we're thrilled to have 18 new, these do not count developer projects, these do not count offices, these are just people calling up a private well saying, "We'd like to connect the DTMA water." So we're very pleased with that. As well as, we are continuing to grow through water main extensions, through basically developer projects. One key one that we are very happy to supply is the New Britain Borough University Village. There's going to be about 150 apartments going in there, and we extended our 12-inch water main into the, the heart of the New Britain Borough University Village. So we're looking forward to a nice, long partnership with New Britain Borough, as well as some other construction. If you see construction going around in Doylestown Township, you, you know that they're getting public water. And some of the more prominent construction around the area was Metro Storage along 611, the Burke Track along Bristol and Upper State Road, as well as the new Doylestown Office Medical Building that's being fit out for, I guess, more, more, more doctors and, and like. We also finalized a 15-year bulk water sale agreement with the county of Bucks that we have been serving them for about, probably going back to 20 to 30 years. We're happy to extend the partnership with them. The picture you see there is our pump station that fills the water tank in the back of their property. So we, we're, we're very excited to, to work with the county and look forward to growing with them. We also submitted two grant applications for various water system improvement, including Delaware Valley University System. We're looking to partner with them to build an interconnection. And we also, in 2019, are continuing to privately contract-operate their water system. I know it's a mutually beneficial relationship, and they are very ecstatic that, that we are partnering with them. Looking ahead to 2020, as I mentioned, we performed a tank inspection last year. We're going to be painting one of our tanks that are off 611. And we're also going to, I'll, I'll take a second here to mention what a cross-connection control program is. What, basically, our commercial property owners are required to have a backflow preventer installed. And basically, you're asking, "What is a cross-connection?" So basically, if there is any potential connection for potable water, drinking water, to come into contact with any sort of contaminant or hazardous material, that is a cross-connection. Okay, Keith, what, what does that mean? So I'll give a simple example. A few years ago, at a local fast-food chain, the workers would wash lettuce in a tub of sink. They would pull down the hose and wash the lettuce. Well, the hose broke one day and just stayed in the low position in the tub. So at the end of the night, of course, lettuce clogged sewers and, and water then filled up the tub. So one night, there must have been a change in the water pressure out in the system of this local public water supplier, and somehow the water got sucked into the, the hose or the, or the, the drain, the hose, got sucked into the hose. Well, the problem was that water was filled with E. coli. So now you have E. coli that is being back-siphoned into a public water system for other people to drink. There's other instances where Flynn, Michigan, had some lead that was actually being back-siphoned into the public water supply. And there was a Dr. Pepper manufacturing facility out in, somewhere in Pennsylvania that people complained of sore throats for years. Well, sure enough, their carbonation was being back-siphoned into the public water main. So a backflow preventer, as you see up there, prevents contaminated water from potentially entering our system. So there will be a, a cost to commercial property owners to, to either test their backflow or have one installed. Most of our property owners should have backflow tested, but they will be required to test every year for this program. It's basically reducing the risk to everybody that, that is on the public water system. We're also going to be continuing to look at water quality and how we can improve. And finally, we are pleased to announce and to partner with the township on their sewer project that we're going to be installing roughly three miles of public water in Pebble Ridge and Woodridge. And we're excited and to be having the opportunity to hook up as, as many people as we can. So that's about it, I think. So I don't know...
Thank you.
Anybody has any questions at all?
Are you going to stay around? We have the ordinance on the agenda. There's some questions about that.
Yeah, sure.
All right.
Sure.
The solicitor's not here because we sent him home. He was hacking and coughing.
Was he sick?
He's everywhere. So he's go home.
Yeah, stay away from me, too.
Yeah. So we'll be talking about it in a little bit.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks, Keith.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yep.
From the Environmental Advisory Council. Welcome.
Well, one of these days, I will have a beautiful PowerPoint. Our EAC has plenty of opportunities to create beautiful PowerPoints, but I don't know what's wrong with us. So...
You're busy doing other things.
Maybe next year. I do have a couple of visual aids, but nothing that's as exciting as looking at that, that municipal authority PowerPoint. I always learn so much when I, when I come to this meeting. So I'm, I just passed out what I'm going to say. I'm probably going to have to just read it. I didn't want to forget anything, so here goes. Your Environmental Advisory Council had another productive year, and we haven't stopped. Our members are Dawn Richardson, me, Janine Mitchell, Marty Brooks, Tanya Casas, Ann Woodbury, Jim Baldessari, and Heidi Schiver. And we worked with associate member Dan Wood last year, board partner Jen Herring, and special projects coordinator Andrea Suston, who is in the booth tonight, I see, to accomplish a great deal and to continue our visible presence in the township and beyond. I think one of our major goals in the last year has been to be visible. We want people to know that Doylestown Township has an environmental advisory council, and we'd like them to know a little bit about what we do. So this year, we continued to streamline our organization and procedures. We decided to have a strategic plan. I think we did that two years ago, and it's really helped us because we stay focused on long-range projects, and we try to stay track on current projects. It's so satisfying at the end, when we go over our strategic, our strategic plan quarterly, to see at the end of a line that it says "completed." And I see more and more of that. We have quite a long list of projects, and many of them have been completed. I'll show you two in just a moment. Our EAC members can access our online EAC calendar now to keep track of events. That's thanks to Andrea's efforts. Our Bird Town Committee, now chaired by Heidi Schiver, is meeting regularly again after a little hiatus. And we have a nice presence at events now. We just, we have a new table cover that has monarch butterflies on it. It's gorgeous. We just, um, we have a new table cover that has monarch butterflies on it. It's gorgeous. We have our banner, our Environmental Advisory Council banner. We have green shirts with pine cones that say Doylestown Township EAC. And now, we even have name tags. Oh, I suppose I should've worn it, so I could show you. I'm sorry, I forgot about it. Anyway, so, here are some of the things that we did this year. We recommended the Ready for 100 Sustainability Initiative to the board, and we will soon draft a, a resolution and hope that you'll consider, um, looking at it. And, and maybe we will be the first township, the first municipality in Bucks County to adopt the Ready for 100 Sustainability Initiative. We're hoping that that happens. So, thank you for considering. We also sent a memo, a memo to the board this year about applying the Green Points Initiative to the township's capital projects with encouragement to go green whenever we can. We created a new wetlands sign. If you walk in Central Park, I'm sure you've noticed it. It's really pretty. It's been installed, um, on the other side of the bridge from Kids Castle, next to those cattails and silky dogwood that thrive there. The grassland sign that we worked on with several other groups last year, I'm sorry, in 2018, was installed at Pine Run Reservoir. If you've seen the, the, the Sand Hill cranes at Pine Run, you've seen our grassland sign. It's very pretty, very informative. Our, our, our aim is usually educational, um, and so I think we are making inroads with that. The Native Plant Demonstration Garden was an award winner again this year. In 2019, we were awarded the Bowman's Hill Wildflower Preserve Land Ethics Award. Then in September, the Native Plant Garden was awarded Pennsylvania Horticultural Society's Blue Ribbon Award for Community Gardens. We continue to schedule a Garden Maintenance Day on the last Saturday of every month from March through November, from nine to eleven. And our Native Plant Garden Brigade works at the garden. Sometimes we number six, sometimes we number three, some, sometimes we number twenty. And we welcome anybody to show up to work at the garden. A new sign at the garden now reminds everyone who, who goes there that it was established in 2014. I can hardly believe that. It's six years old. But it is an ongoing project of our EAC. EAC was asked for, um, some input on plant installations here at the new township building, and after several site visits, a plant list was submitted to the township. EAC members also assisted with some container planting for the new building's official opening in July. Our Birdtown Subcommittee had two bird walks again this year, and we will continue to do that. One in May, when the migration is coming through from the south, and another in September, when the migration turns around and travels, um, travels to the south. Our EAC Birdtown Information Table was a presence at three of the township's summer concerts this year. Six residents took part in the annual Christmas Bird Count in December, and the bluebird trail nest boxes were cleaned in late winter, and some were repaired and replaced. I think we have about forty bluebird nest boxes in the township. We continued our speaker series. In April, we heard from a group called Dare to be Tick-Aware, which we held at Delaware Valley University. We collaborated with students on several le-, levels this past year. We were, uh, we worked with Central Bucks West Environmental Science students by having an invasive plant ID class in March, and then, and then a tree ID class in April. In May, we had three climate change policy graduate students from Delaware Valley University present to our EAC on ideas for sustainability in local municipalities. In this, on the elementary school level, for, I think, the fifth year, Quetz Elementary's second graders took an EAC-led habitat walk. Um, it's always so much fun. I love that. I, I usually do it, um, we usually have two classes. Twenty-five kids, about six parents, two teachers, and me. And, and we, we walk for an hour. It's just great. They keep habitat journals. Uh, in October, we held an invasive plant workshop for residents on burning bush, which is also called winged eunomus. Participants learned how to identify burning bush, bec-, and because it's a common invasive, and we removed about fifty plants from Central Park. This year, we assisted one Eagle Scout with hi-, with his leadership project, which is the Pollinator Palace by the Native Plant Demonstration Garden. One more tree was added to the township's list of heritage trees. We have an EAC page in the township newsletter. In 2019, there was an article about recycling, and soon there will be articles about pesticides and trees. This newsletter has lots of information about our current big event project, which is Ten Days for Trees. Make sure you look at your newsletter. We worked on our Native Plants Four Season brochure for homeowners from May through December. It was a big job. It is now available. Here it is. My one vi- I have one of two visual aids. This is available in the township building and down by the Native Plant Demonstration Garden. Uh, we continue to urge residents to install native plants whenever and wherever possible. As, and we have included in this brochure, and I need to tell you this, somebody called it a centerfold. I say it shamelessly. Look at our centerfold. This is a chart of easy-to-grow, hardy native plants, and we encourage everybody to start using more of them. So, pick up a brochure, either out here in the lobby or down by the garden. We continue to encourage a reduction in mowing in parks and open spaces in the township. Our EAC was well-represented in both planning and attending the Meadow Management for Municipalities workshop sponsored by Bucks County Audubon just this past February. We also partnered with Bucks County Audubon Society for our Earth Day in 2019, and in a, in acquiring an excellent handout on mosquito prevention. Our EAC once again hosted the Bucksmont EAC Summit in June. We hosted speakers on Ready for 100 and on Lambertville's Single Use Plastics Ban, which went into effect January first of this year. We pre-, we presented at the summit about new, our new landscape and buffer planting ordinance, which we're so pleased to share with other municipalities. Representatives from eight different regional EACs were present at the summit, and it resulted in follow-up collaboration on a variety of topics, including Ready for 100 and the banning of single-use plastics. Using Doylestown Borough's survey of residents about a single-use plastics ban, we are in the process of survey, surveying township residents about the subject. Check the township website and take the survey. It will give us valuable information about where township residents stand on the issue. In November, we were actively involved with Heritage Conservancy in the dedication of Hearts Woods as part of the Old Growth Forest Network. You'd be surprised at how many people don't know that we have an old growth forest, that it's called Hearts Woods, and that it's on the hill in Central Park. If you stand with your back to Kids Castle, it's the hill. There are about forty acres of mature forest, and now we're part of the Old Growth Forest Network. In October, we began discussion of a special 2020 event called Ten Days for Trees. This event will take place from April sixteenth through April twenty-fifth and promises to be awesome. Use the township's website and the Facebook page to learn more about Ten Days for Trees. We have a lot of activities planned, including a pop-up forest in here, poetry readings by Bucks County laureates and residents, movies at the county theater, and three different tree plantings. We will celebrate the fiftieth anniversary of Earth Day and our annual Arbor Day celebration through these Ten Days for Trees. As a result of the Ten Days for Trees planning, our EAC has met with Doylestown Borough's EAC several times. This is new. And we are collaborating on, uh, tree planting at Pool's Corner at the Park and Ride on April twenty-fifth. That is the last day of the Ten Days for Trees. 2020 proves to be another very active year for our township EAC. However, before I finish, I want to acknowledge that we too lost a longtime member of our council. Dawn Richardson died in December. We miss him and all of the experience and expertise that he brought to our EAC. His life partner, Burt DeVries, plans to donate a tree in his memory at the Native Plant Garden. She remembers fondly that he cut the ribbon when we dedicated the garden, at the garden party in 2018. So, thank you for your patience. Next year, I hope that I do have a PowerPoint. Wouldn't that be a switch? I know this is kind of long, um, but I wanted you to know that, uh, we continue to work on having a good reputation in the township and in letting people know who our EAC is. Forgot to show you something. This is a brochure, a brochure about the Native Plant Workshop coming up on, um, March twenty-first. So, you can pick up this information in the lobby as well. Do you guys have any questions about Environmental Advisory Council?
Oh, you were pretty thorough. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Nice, nice job, you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. It's our pleasure.
We're proud of you all. All right, um, any visitors or public comment? Hearing none? Here are some announcements. We're next meeting on Tuesday, March seventeenth at seven PM. Daylight savings time, wahoo. Is this, uh, Sunday, March eighth? So, you set your clocks ahead one hour. We all get to sleep in. Um, so, don't forget to do that. And also, good opportunity to replace your batteries in your smoke detector and check on your carbon monoxide detectors. Just make sure they're all working. Um, Doylestown Township Parks and Recreation is running a bus trip on, uh, to visit Nine Eleven Museum Memorial in New York. That's on Tuesday, April twelfth. Doylestown Township Park and Recreation, a partnership with Premier World Discovery, is offering a trip in 2020 in the Colorado Rockies, Rails, and Western National Parks. That's September thirteenth. It's a nine-day trip. And on, uh, April twenty-fifth, the Doylestown Township Community Arts Event is happening. So, there's opportunities for neighbors and, you know, blocks and hoods to get together and put, put, put your tables together and sell all your stuff that's collecting in your basement and your garages. Movie and ski tickets are available, so contact the administrative offices. And if you got potholes, don't call us, unless there are roads, or there are borough roads, because they have more potholes than we do. You can tell them I said that. All right. Now, for potholes for state roads, call 1-800-FIX-ROAD. For township roads, call us, 348-9915. And all the state roads can be found on our website. And if you want to know if it's a borough road, call me. I'll tell you. All right, next item on the agenda. Oh, well, let me re-announce the March twenty-first Native Plant, um, what was it? No, March twenty-first. You do. Invasive Plant Workshop, March twenty-first. It's coming up. And of course, the, the tree thing, sixteenth through the twenty-fifth. And then, we'll be planting trees at Pool's Corner, April twenty-fifth. Okay, next item, um, consideration of approval of the minutes for the February eighteenth, 2020 meeting?
I'll move to approve the minutes for twenty, uh, February eighteenth, 2020.
Everyone had a chance to review them? Any corrections? Just a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Okay, moving along to reports from the solicitor. He said, so he's not gonna talk to us. Um, Township Engineer, anything? That would be you.
I'd like to.
Chief?
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. Um, February twenty-fourth, Detective McCrisky attended a drug and alcohol awareness event, uh, held at CB South High School, um, which was part of the CB Cares Parent Positive Speaker Series. Um, the event held a mock teen bedroom, familiarizing parents with what, what belongs in a room, what might not belong in a room of the teen. Uh, there's a presentation on vaping and other drugs, and a panel discussion related to the impacts of drug use within our communities, both from the drug user and from the families that, uh, um, the Bucks County Drug and Alcohol Commission also dan-, donated several of these, uh, what they're calling Safer Lockboxes to the township, which I will have available on a limited basis through the Police Department. Just a, it's kind of a interesting concept. You can lock your, your medications in here to prevent, um, somebody who might be susceptible to drug use, to try and help prevent them to getting into. Um, it's kind of like an advert, an advertisement thing to keep people, um, aware of the situation. In, in all fairness, it's basically a lockbox. Okay, so, um, so we'll have a limited amount of those available at the Police Department for somebody that wants to stop in. Prefer giving them out to township residents.
Okay.
Um, the other thing, I, I attended a, uh, meeting on February twenty-eighth. It was a kickoff event sponsored by the Bucks County Drug and Alcohol Commission. Um, they're expanding the B-Pare Program, which is an acronym for the Bucks County Police Assisting in Recovery. Um, so, we're gonna jump on board that. We'll be one of, they're hoping to expand it to twenty municipalities in the county. Um, currently, there's only five, so I've committed to it. Um, what we'll be doin', it's aimed towards getting help for individuals seeking treatment rather than incarceration. Um, there's certain limitations they must do, uh, to help pro-, process along. Basically, we'll be facilitator to get, if somebody comes into the township, we'll facilitate them getting into treatment.
Excellent.
There are just a couple of events that we attended last week as Police Department.
Thank you, Chief. It's all good stuff. Um, Director of Operations?
Just have one item, um, in, this is the 2020 Street Sweeping Contract. In 2019, the Border Supervisors approved, uh, the Street Sweeping Contract and awarded that to Riley Sweeping. As part of that contract, it allows for two one-year extensions for 2020 and 2021. Uh, I contacted Riley Sweeping. They would like to extend the contract for 2020. The contract allows for a price increase in accordance with the consumer, the 2019 Consumer Price Index, uh, increase for the Philadelphia region, which was 2.4%. Um, this brings their 2020, uh, Street Sweeping Contract in total to $37,458, as well as an hourly rate of $143.36. Um, that is for, uh, the thirty-seven thousand is for one sweeping in the spring and one in the fall. I'm asking for the board's approval of Riley Sweeping's, uh, contract for 2020.
Now, that hourly rate is encompassed in the $37,000?
No, it does not. The Riley, I'm sorry, the, the hourly rate is for additional, anything that we would need, let's say emergencies that we would have, or any additional work that we would need, uh, have Riley do. We would be-
Okay, beyond this contract, then?
Beyond this contract, correct. And we've, and we've used them in the past for, um, where we've had, uh, trash haulers and things on the road that we've had, have the roads swept.
So, is, is that an amount that you would have to come back and get approval on? Should the-
We typically don't because they're typically not that expen-, not that expensive. It's just, and again, it's an hourly rate. So, it's just usually, usually an emergency or at needed basis.
Okay, sounds good. Is there a motion to approve the extension of the one-year contract to, um, what's, who are they called? Riley Sweeping for the 2020 Street Sweeping Program?
Make the motion?
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Good, thanks. Thanks, Chief. Um, Chief. Thanks, uh, thanks, Director of Ops.
That's okay. I'm fine with that.
Okay, we have a memo from Stephanie for several training requests. Um, one for Andrea Suston, Dave Tomco, another for Andrea Suston. Did I get all of them?
Well, the first one is for the Bike Hike Committee for Liz Wykoff.
Oh, I don't have that.
To attend, that was the first one on there.
Yeah, I have that in a separate paper. I'm sorry. There we go. First one, let's do this one at a time, then.
Mm-hmm.
Because I'm looking at the training events for the staff. The first one is a training event for a committee member, a volunteer, correct?
Yes.
On the, um, the Bike and Hike Committee has recommended that we allocate, um, the balance of the workshop costs of $858 for, um, for Ms. Wykoff to attend this workshop. I got it?
Correct. Yes.
So, thoughts? We don't usually pay for or allocate township funds, even though there are township funds that are dedicated, township funds for volunteers. So, this is, I might be one of the first that I've seen.
Um, it probably is. Um, I, I mean, outside of small training, then, but this would be a bigger one.
I haven't seen, I don't recall any of these before.
Yeah. Um, this is a bigger one because it would be including, um, travel and overnight stay. She did receive a scholarship, and this is something that the Bike Hike Committee discussed at their last meeting that they feel is something they need to become more familiar with and learn about, um, these new off-road trails that are becoming very popular. and learn about these new off-road trails that are becoming very popular. And so, they were very excited about the opportunity to send Liz to this training. And I'm sure Tom, who's been on the Bike Hike Committee, can address that as well.
Liz was the one that led the charge to build the pump track over at Fannie Chapman. And that's turned out to be real successful for kids. And this is oriented towards kids. Kids, a lot of them are getting into biking by biking on trails at this point and not the paved trails, but off-road. And, and we've got an opportunity with the toll development on Bristol Road, where there's a massive open space area down along the Shammany that we have trails identified on. But as part of the negotiations, that wasn't part of what toll was responsible for. So, we see this as an opportunity to get some training for our, our volunteers and use it immediately for things like that, because we see that as something we can do as a volunteer program. And in the long run, I think we've got people like that want to do this for us. I, I would encourage the board to, to support it.
I was going to say, she, when she explained it, because I'm not a more of a novice.
It was a long discussion at the Bike and Hike.
Yeah. What I was more of a novice is that you could be on a regular paved path, and then it could be boulders and things, and the kids are doing more of that mountain biking. And you could do them like really next to each other. So, that's how she sort of explained that, right? So, because that is becoming more common, and I think there's more of an effort to, for the kids to bike to school with some of the paths they're talking about. That's...
All right. And any thoughts about this? My concern is only that we give, you know, we start to go down this slope that where, you know, volunteers are wanting to do special things and committees and boards are saying, that's good, let's do that special thing. And then I don't want to be authorizing money to, for volunteer education and training necessarily. And I, if we do it here, are we going to be doing it? Or should we say, we say yes to this, we say yes to the next one? It's just something we should think about.
I mean, they do have their, that budget, their money that's been raised over the period of time for the Bike Hike Committee. I know the EAC sometimes attends local training for a few dollars here and there, but nothing where it's an airfare and an overnight stay. So, it's a little different. But, you know, the Bike Hike Committee is, you know, supportive of it.
Okay. Any other thoughts on this?
Just one from Mr. Kelso. Besides the new construction for the Toll Brothers property, has, have other areas of the township been identified that would be suitable for mountain bike trails?
We're, we're looking at, with New Britton Township and Chalfont Borough, some of those large open space areas out near the water treatment plant on, at the, it's called the Bristol Road Extension or something there at 152, I think. And then we're also, we talked about, people are currently using Farm 7 and Fox Farm over at Delvaux College and starting to talk with large property owners like that that maybe we can work with. And then there's Pine Run and some other areas. And particularly, I think it's a deficit out at Peace Valley Park. There are a lot of opportunities there for that. So, just during our meeting, Liz and people ran off a half a dozen of them that... And, and the idea is to get kids into areas that are safe and acceptable, so they're not doing, going onto people's private property where they shouldn't. And so, it was, that's, that was the focus of the discussion.
She's also a teacher at Linden. So, I know she bikes the school. She's a huge, she's just, as you all know, a huge biking advocate. But I think there's also another training in the fall if, if this one didn't work as well, if we needed to sit on it and, and think about the precedent we'd be setting, right?
Yes. She did, yes, you're absolutely right, Nancy. She did indicate there is another training in the fall, so...
Hold on. What, what?
So, just to clarify, the budget for the Bike and Hike? That's funded through Doylestown Township tax money? No, it's... No. It's money that came from contributions, sales of bike stuff over the years. And this goes back to like the inception, literally. We used part of it to get an easement one time, but the bulk of it has come either from contributions, raised monies from the borough and the township, the committee over the years, and, you know, development money, things like that, that were specifically targeted for this fund.
We had this issue several years ago with Kids Castle. A volunteer wanted to then get paid, and it was a very difficult thing to consider. And we said no, because it, we don't pay volunteers. So, this is, this, this is why it's sitting, not sitting that comfortably with me. But I'm going to defer to the majority of the board, what their thoughts are on this.
I mean, I think it's obviously less about, all the reasoning is completely valid, but I think it's more about the discussion. I would probably feel more comfortable having more discussion around this type of policy, less about the, the need for, for the actual training. I don't have a problem with the training, but I think we have to look at this from a, a bigger perspective.
Okay. I agree. So, it doesn't prevent us from okaying this tonight, but we should probably consider going forward what we do, what we're doing about this? Or do you want to wait until the...
I mean, I think if there's another training in the fall, I think it's probably worth figuring that out. That's my opinion, you know?
Do we need to ask you a question?
Sure. Please.
Is the training something that the Bike and Hike Committee would recommend that the township had a staff member attend? If that answer would be yes, then it's just a thought. If it's something that they would like to see us do, and that we can get somebody else to do it on our time?
I think the answer is yes. I think it's a, a skill that we'd like to have in-house somewhere. And I personally don't see the difference between having that in-house as a volunteer or as staff.
I understood.
I mean, I'm...
I understood.
I believe it is a policy matter.
As, as the employer, we have a little more control over, you know, how, how those dollars are spent, the attitude, the intent and all that.
And I'm going to the National Bike Conference in DC in two weeks.
Okay. So, you're going to apply for some money, are you?
But my company's covering that.
Oh, okay.
And it's a lot more than $1,500.
Well, all right. So, well, we can, we, is the same, is, is the training the same in the fall as it is for this?
She mentioned there was a second one. I don't know if it's in terms of her teaching, if she'd be able to go. She didn't, that would probably be the only thing. She just mentioned there were two, because she wasn't trying to push it. It was more recognizing there's different ways to bike. It's not just all flat paved trails. And that was just, I think the group was excited to explore how to be a leader in that. Would you agree, Tom?
And she has a passion for this, so I think...
Yeah.
She's very good.
Yeah.
She's developed...
I don't, I don't know if any of you watched the video that was put together about her and the witches going through Doylestown on their bikes on Halloween. She, she has regular rides, and it's women-based riding. She won't let me go along. I really want to go on the witches' ride. It was, it's, it's a video you have to see. And it's just 100 women dressed up as witches riding their bikes through Doylestown. It's, it's just amusing.
I wouldn't even have to dress up. All right. So, what's the pleasure of the board? As my former colleague Walt Berry used to say. The board, the chair will entertain a motion.
My inclination, if it's coming out of their budget, that they have money set aside for these kinds of things, I'm okay with it. I do understand the concern about this being a, a pattern in the future for if the township is specifically spending tax dollars to send volunteers for training. We have no control over where they go after that and what happens there. But since this is money set aside specifically for advancing the Bike and Hike Committee, I think that would fall under this.
Yeah. But you may not know what I'll tell you, that most of the boards and commissions have funding set aside.
Right.
So, we, so they would have the opportunity to do a similar application.
And I think we have to, I, I just think there needs to be policy around it before we approve things like this, because who's to say that Park and Rec says tomorrow they want to send five people at $5,000 apiece? Like, what's the, the cap on this? Like, there's, there's a lot of different variables that we should explore before we, before we approve something like this. And, I mean, I'm not saying I don't agree with it. I'm just saying that I think we should, we should have some standardized things that should be set up in a policy before we just approve it.
And this is the first time someone's come forward where...
Right. And I think it's good that it's been brought, and it's like, yeah. And it's been brought up, and now we can put some language around it that states the parameters and how something like this would work.
No, I, I agree. I think there should be a policy around it, just so that coming forward, we're not put in an awkward situation. It's not the idea of her going. I think we're all set for that. It's more the... Do you have a comment?
I was just looking for the next supervisor's meeting.
It's the 17th. Oh, no, it's the 6th. No, we don't have a meeting on the 6th?
The 17th.
The next meeting on the board, yes, March 17th. March 17th. Can we, can we... Well, we have enough, maybe enough time to develop...
She has enough time to book it?
Why don't you, why don't we ask the, the, the volunteer whether we have time to consider this maybe for the fall session?
I think that's fair.
And then, and then we can reconsider, you know, something on the 17th, if not, if that's not available to her. Is that, can we do that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Sweet.
All right. So, let's pass on this, let's table this for the moment. I think I need a motion to table.
Motion to table.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor of tabling of this issue?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Now, the More Plain is the training event for Andrea?
For myself and Andrea to attend the ICA Northeast Regional, for myself and Dave to attend PSATs, and for myself and Andrea to attend the Annual Association of Pennsylvania Municipal Management.
Now, those we can approve in tandem unless anybody wants to talk about anyone in particular?
No.
Well, good. Is there a motion to approve the three conferences and stays, as detailed in the memo?
I'll make a motion to approve the three conferences.
And I'll second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That was easier. All right. Now, unfinished business, the proposed well ordinance.
Supervisors.
Oh, I want to skip over the supervisor. Every time, I want to skip over the supervisors. Sorry. Nancy, you got anything?
Good news is the dog park fob is up and running. So, congratulations. And they're working on that center dog park area. I guess they finally got cold enough to finish, fix some of the drainage. And TAB did not meet.
So, that's it? You what?
The TAB meeting did not meet.
Oh, the TAB did meet. Okay. Ten, you got anything?
I don't have anything.
Ten, you would be next. You look like, don't, you don't look like the solicitor.
Sorry.
You should... Nothing for me tonight? Dan Wood?
Yes. I don't want to steal Mr. Van Houten's thunder too much for the water and sewer, since he was supposed to present tonight, but just want to make note that we have three new members on that board who are super excited, ready to help out. And as we wait for our 537 Plan to come back, to plot our course on any possible sewer expansions in the future, they're shifting towards working on things like the water ordinance we're about to discuss and education for our residents about safe drinking water. And on the note of new members, the EAC is looking for one new member. Besides that, Ms. Mitchell covered everything. I got nothing else to add.
Thanks, Dan. And here are my props for the next announcements. These are from the Park and Rec Board. They're very cute little pens and they're the little hairy things. That's for your screen, to clean your screen off. So, Karen gave those to me because she wants me to make sure, and I want to make, make this announcement because I chair the golf outing every year. Our golf outing is Monday, June 1st at Doylestown Country Club. We're looking for sponsors, and there are opportunities for foursomes. So, the flyers are out at the table, and you can also get information online. The other thing, we need sponsors, and for the Performing Arts Series this year, begins on June 17th with the Midnight Rock Show and ends on October 10th with the movie Hocus Pocus. So, there's a lot of opportunity for us to get out and party and, and see, see these wonderful, and enjoy these wonderful bands and entertainments. And, but it costs money. So, I'm looking for sponsors. So, that's that. And if you sponsor or not, you're welcome to one of these fuzzy pens. They're actually adorable, and they make me smile. So, hopefully, they'll make you smile too. All right. That's all I have. Now, the proposed well ordinance. We considered it the last meeting. There's still some questions about it. I, Keith is here if we want to follow up with any further questions, and he's anticipating questions. So, Keith?
Do you want me to give a little background? I mean, Jeff was probably going to do this, so I could just do it. Originally, I believe the well ordinance initiated with the concept that we would have properties that have private wells that front a public water line at the time of sale connect to the system. That then kind of morphed to having the wells tested prior to the sale and, and the connection if need be, or a water treatment system put on. And since that time, you have the previous draft from December, but also one of the directions was to meet with the Realtors Associations, which Keith and Jeff Garten and myself did. And we have our analysis of what we learned from the Realtors and are welcoming any questions as we continue to have the discussion on the need for such an ordinance.
Sounds like from the memo, tell me if I'm wrong, that the, it's like back off the ordinance right now and look at other options? Is that what I get from this memo? Yeah?
Yeah. I think we need more education. I think that's one of the things we learned from the Realtors. And a big concern is sort of, you know, making a problem for people who are trying to sell and whether we're creating a problem for ourselves in that area and putting sort of a bull's eye on our back in making people question well water in the, in the township. So, education and, and the like is probably more recommended.
Do you remember when the 202 bypass was being considered for 20 years? And then people bought up, bought up in your neighborhood, Kathy Brown, and no one told them that that was going to happen? And a lot of residents were very upset about that. And I think this kind of is analogous to this. There, there is not necessarily problems with our water, but there's, there are problems with water around us. And water doesn't stay, as we know, and it's silly to say, but they don't stay within municipal boundaries. They, water like traverses the, the, under, what's under the ground. So, I think it behooves us, not only to tell, you know, our residents and be educating of them, but I think the Realtors of Bucks County and Doylestown Township have an obligation to alert residents, whether they're selling or buying, that they should have their wells tested, their private wells tested. And that should be something that they, the onus is on them to do, because we don't know every, we don't know every purchase and sale potential. We don't until almost after. And as you know, we don't have occupancy requirements, so there's no way that we can catch this. So, I, I think that, I don't, we can't mandate it on the Realtors, but I, you know, I, I think they have an obligation here.
I, I, I agree as well. And, you know, reading through this, it also brings us back to the, to the, this current sewer project where Realtors were selling those houses, knowing that this was happening. I mean, literally a month before we approved it, houses were being sold in that neighborhood. And so, the Realtor Alliance has an obligation, and, you know, I believe that some of them weren't disclosing that to make the sale. And so, I think, you know, we need to look at that closely too. I'm more concerned about that than mandating the, the, the hookups at this point. Like, I think that the idea of our residents being informed of things that we are considering is, is an obligation to the Realtors in this township.
They, they did mention that on every home sale agreement, there is an option to accept a water test. And some way, we just need to convey to them that please...
That's not enough.
Urge these people to, to take their test.
That's not enough. The Realtors should be saying, there are issues in Bucks County with water. It's why, it's advisable to get your water tested.
Yeah. I think we can do a lot of education through the Public Water and Sewer Advisory Board, even on our website. We can have frequently asked questions. We can, we, we can, we can spread the word, maybe in our newsletter.
Yeah. Yeah, there's just no way that we can actually capture people who are gonna be buying houses in Doylestown Township.
However, the Realtor Alliance that we met with did indicate, if we prepare information, they would be happy to push it out. So, I think, you know, that's their, their willingness to meet us halfway, and I agree. I think that if we can put things together, working, Dan, with the Public Water and Sewer, I mean, that seems to be their goal for this year, is, you know, education. We can start there, and then, you know, step back and reevaluate if the need is still...
Sounds like we're gonna push off this ordinance only in the event that the Realtors take this, take it a step further.
Sure.
So, we can avoid the ordinance if they help us, and partner with this education and, and...
Yes.
Education program.
That works.
All right, so, can we, can...
I just have one question about it. If, if a buyer opts to do the water test, is there a way we can mandate that, that the results of that test be shared with us? That way, we're not forcing them to do the test, but we're asking them to share that data.
I don't know how we could do that. It's private, it's a test, they own it.
I don't think you can mandate.
But, I don't, I wouldn't know how we could make that happen on purpose.
Okay.
We can ask the solicitor next time he's here, but I don't know how, you know, being kind of like a lawyer myself, I don't know how we could mandate that.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else, is there a motion to table the ordinance? It's key, because, I mean, they're doing that now with STUCO, so we should be doing it with the water as well. So... It's too late for STUCO.
Well, the water's an ongoing issue, it's gonna be changing. We have legislature, the PA Legislature's going through a lot of studies, the DEP's working on it, so it's, when we prepare this information for the Realtors, it's definitely gonna have to be updated like pretty constantly.
Yeah, one, one thing we, we need to put on, if it's not already there, on our private well testing is recommended to all township residents. Here's where you go to get the, this well test, this well test, and this one. We should have that, because I understand from, from Jen, she had a hard time trying to find a company locally that would test for the things that she wants to have, was tested on, so...
I made a few calls, there's, there's a lot of confusion, I think, about where you can go to get your water tested. You can't go to like the Bucks County Health Department like you would for the fecal coliform well testing. There's special facilities, there are Pennsylvania certified facilities that you'd have to go to get this testing. I'm actively looking right now, I just contacted someone today to find out more about the process, and I'll probably end up getting the water tested just to see, but...
Okay.
But I would love to actually walk through the process, so that we can see where the pain points are in the process as well. That way, we're not gonna, if we do consider this in the future, we're not mandating something that might not be easy to implement or possible to implement.
I can help you with the, who we use for our laboratories as well, so DTMA uses a couple labs.
We'll make that public on our sites.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
So, it sounds like we're in consensus that we're gonna send some kind of communication to the Alliance, and let them know we'll work with them, we're gonna put off the ordinance for now, and see what we can do with education, and what they're, what they would welcome as their obligation to inform home buyers and home sellers in Doylestown Township. Is that right?
Sounds right.
Okay, so I need a motion to table the ordinance.
I'll make the motion to table the well ordinance.
Second. All in favor of the motion to table?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda, zoning hearing board application for 1846 Southeastern Road. They requested a variance, Madam Manager, what do you recommend we do here?
I recommend we leave this matter to the zoning hearing board.
Agree.
Okay, so be it. That's it?
That's it.
Announcements, you want me to do them again? I don't think so. All right, we are adjourned, thank you very much, everybody. Thank you, Board, good meeting, I really appreciate that. Thank you. A lot of good stuff done tonight.